Good evening. We'll call the order of the Stevensville Town Council meeting agenda for Thursday, December 12, 2024. Janelle, would you please take the roll call?
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilor Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Hockenson?
Aye. Would you please all rise to the question. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Move on to public comments. Item number three, these are comments from citizens on any items that are not on the agenda. Any items not on the agenda. Would you have one public comment that came in that the lady asked that Janelle please read? So Janelle, would you please read that?
Friday, November 15, 2024. As requested, please include in packet, "Thank you, Kate." Your Honorable Mayor and Stevensville Councilmember. At the council meeting of October 24th, Sarah Herker one-sided talked, one-sided talked her perspective of persecuting Berta Farms and her father Frank Korowski. Though what she said was incorrect, self-serving and not factual, and she did not talk about what has happened to get to where they are now. The Bay Harbor Star on November 5th published about her talking, but it is highly important for the council and the mayor to know the history and the facts. The lawsuit on the Montana Supreme Court website has a statement of facts about the blowing up of dangerous chemicals, and some of us in town remember when the hazmat teams and fire department dynamited and collapsed in lavatories that Frank was operating. This entire thing is about Frank Korowski intimidating an entire town for decades and decades. If Stevensville does not enforce its own rules now, then everyone else in the town will do whatever they want in the future. You should enforce what you started to and do not be swayed by one person's story or lies. Stevensville won the court title, so enough is enough. There is no permitted dwelling on Berta's farm, and he has been intimidating all of us for decades, and it is wrong. Please don't believe sort of pity story as we have heard it over and over, and enough is enough. Please. If you are not sure, then look up all of the old facts. The place is much more than an eyesore or trash, and it is dangerous and frightening so much that no one wants to go there to be, to do what they need to do. So please clean up Berta Farms now. No more excuses. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Move on. Any other public comments on anything not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Do you approve of minutes? Item number four, town council meeting minutes, 11:14, 2024. May I entertain a motion, please? Councilmember Nelson.
I make a motion that we approve town council meeting minutes for 11:14, 2024.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson. May I have a second, please?
Sure.
We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Smith. Do we have a discussion from the council on the minutes? Are we good on the minutes from the council before I pass on to the public for comments? Seeing none, is there any comments from the public on the minutes? From 11:14? And from the council, Janelle, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Item number B, special town council meeting minutes, closed session. So as you well know, we have a, uh, the minutes in front of you. Since it was a closed session, we couldn't put that online. So if you could review that. And with that, can I entertain a motion, please? Councilmember Smith.
I move that we accept special town council minutes for 11:19, 2024, as written.
We have a motion by Councilmember Smith. Do we have a second? Councilmember Barker?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Barker. So we can't have a discussion since it was closed, so we can't go to the public. So with that, Janelle, would you please take the vote?
Yes. Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Item number five, approval of biweekly claims. Item A, may I entertain a motion, please?
That one is just an informational one.
Oh, okay. I see. You're right. Item number B, the auto cycle claims for November. Councilmember?
Above that, we approve the auto cycle claims for November, uh, number 19366 to 19383, which is a correction because they were duplicated on the next claim set.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Brown. Do we have a second? I second that. Councilmember Nelson. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have a discussion from the council on the auto cycle claims? Councilmember Brown?
Um, claim number 19371, um, chemical Montana company for, uh, the chemicals for the water plant, uh, for $6,121.29. I was wondering if that is more than a month's supply or, uh, chemicals or...
Good question. More than a month? More than a month's supply?
Is it more than a month's?
Oh, yeah. It'll probably six, eight weeks, ten weeks. It's, it's cooling.
It's close to two months, then?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, as we know, we discussed before, this cooling has went through the roof this last year. This company here is a little bit cheaper, and they take their empties back, which is important. There's about 50 empties out there at home. And we're in the winter, and also we're not using as much oil. So I, you probably know that three months before I have to do it. And I also like, go ahead, you first. Councilmember?
Oh, uh, pardon me. Uh, claim number 19372, tire, uh, tire service, Public Works. Uh, I know it doesn't seem like much, but, uh, I was just curious on that. Do we have an option to go through less swap, or is there a reason we're not? Because they would do these tire repairs for the...
Tire rental treats is better and faster.
Okay, that works. I'll take that.
They seem to want to visit.
Okay.
I'd like to say right below that, uh, Councilmember Brown came in earlier today, and right below my page through 519373, Ed Sutherland, excavating at Wall City, clean ditch by railroad tracks, prevent street flooding. Street flooding? Um, I didn't know about this, but about a month and a half ago or so, right, Steve? Yeah. Um, I had a gentleman came in, called, came into my office and said that his backyard and his basement, they were starting to flood because of the ditch back there was getting backed up. So first, Cody and Steve went there and cleaned out the culvert there and thought that would do it, but the problem was even bigger. So that guy came in my office and he said, Ed Sutherland has been, he's the one who usually cleans it back there when he worked here. Well, it's been a while ago, of course, but... So I called Ed, and Ed said, yes, what's going on there is when Creepside Meadows was built, it was a PCI thing, they had to do something with their stormwater. So they built that ditch along there for the stormwater on Creepside, and it comes all the way down in there, that culvert there behind the Senate. So if that's not cleaned out every two or three years, it's, and then it starts backing up. Even though it's not our property, we have to maintain it. So just so you know, that's...
Well, it's, it's flowed down Second Street as well, so we've seen it.
Right, you probably know it, it's...
Yeah, and with, obviously, with the new homes behind us as well, we see that more water coming in now than we did before.
Like Ed said, you have to keep that cleaned out, otherwise it backs up and makes a mess. And I knew nothing about it, and Steve didn't know either. It's gone, we didn't know. Anyway, that's what that bill is about. Any other questions on the auto cycle claim? Any questions from the public on the auto cycle claim? Um, so we spent $181.90 on Berta's stash pile? What kind of stash pile did you burn?
Stash pile, big pile.
A slash?
Slash.
Close to the title, it says stash.
Who's the stash piles?
You know what, we're... Any other questions from the public on the claims? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Item number C, claims. Councilmember Smith?
I move that we approve claims number 19384 through 19414.
We have a motion by Councilmember Smith. Do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Councilmember Nelson? We have a discussion from the public on the claims on this. Councilmember Barker?
So all the GoDaddy domain renals? Will we ever get away from GoDaddy, or is that? No, that's the domain that we...
Yeah, it's a state.
Yeah, the domain is state. It has nothing to do with the dot com or anything like that. It's our domain name, and you can't do it from that. Okay.
Councilmember Barker?
Claim number 19392, um, 1980 Dog Waste Depot, 23777, is that, I guess?
Doggy bag.
Doggy bag.
That is just about a year old.
Okay.
Any other comments on the claims from the public before I turn it over? Coming from the council before I turn it over. Any comments from the public on this set of claims? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Item number six, administrative reports. Airport.
All right, uh, let's see. Courtesy car, um, we just have the insurance finalized on that, so that's ready to go now. Uh, maintenance, uh, no new maintenance items. Uh, it's more work on the snow pile, and the few snows that we have received recently have been small enough and melted off within the same day. So really not, uh, not much there. Not lucky. Uh, CIP projects, uh, grant applications with the Montana Department of Aeronautics. Those went in on November 15th, so we are in the queue for, uh, for that. We'll have a meeting in January. They haven't announced a win yet, but, uh, that meeting will be in Helena where they, uh, they determine what money is going to which airport. So we'll be in attendance in person. Trying to make sure we maximize that. Uh, let's see, we had a pre-design meeting with the FAA on 11/21. That went really well. Um, still really good for the tank and the, uh, the taxiway maintenance, uh, the taxiway extension that we're trying to work out to, uh, pick up some of those FBO hangars that we've got some parties interested in developing. That's hitting a couple roadblocks with the FAA right now, but we're not done fighting that, so we'll, we'll keep going down that path with them. Uh, no real updates on the fuel. We're still, like I said, still on, uh, on target for getting our own tank, but we really have not been able to find any short-term solutions to getting fuel back in there. Hawthorne, Illinois, is not interested in servicing it ever again. Um, which is funny because they're still gonna have to remove it at some point, but it's another, another road that we'll have to go down. Uh, airport board, we have two, uh, new applications for the board, which is great. So we'll be looking to fill those spots. They're, uh, really good applicants. They'll be good assets to the board. And then we've got a number of, uh, interested parties in, uh, building some hangars, so hopefully some of those will go through and we'll get some new development going on in there. That's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Good night. The other departments in your packet, finance department? Yeah, fire department, sir.
So November, the report is in your packet. In November, we had 69 requests for service. Um, 51 of those were, uh, medical responses, nine fires, and nine motor vehicles. So it was 69 in November. Um, to date, we're at 674. So we'll be close to the 700 number by the end of the year. Um, is about what we've been at running, um, lately. So, um, things coming up. So I just got done with an hour and a half long, exciting conference call with a grant writer on a radio grant application. Um, we have done a joint grant application with CMZ Rural, Florence Fire, and Sulu Fire. Um, we're doing a community grant application through the State Fire State Program. Um, we feel we'll play better about going by a community-wide grant versus just individually granting out. So amongst those four different departments, we have 214 seats and fire apparatus. We have 131 firefighters within those four departments. And we have now currently own 91 handheld radios amongst four departments. The town owns 22 handheld radios. So we are looking to replace all those radios. We're looking to replace our 22 handhelds. Our newest handheld is 21 years old. Um, they're no longer compliant.
You said they're 21?
21 years old. Our newest one. So we've been shopping Amazon, eBay, wherever, can't find pieces and parts to keep what we have in service and working. And so we have this grand opportunity that we, we, we partnered in on it. And so we're looking to get 131 brand-new handheld radios to do this grant. Uh, our share will be 21 of the 131. Um, each radio is in the neighborhood of $4,500 a copy to be compliant. So why we're going for a federal grant to fund the majority of all this expense, so... Um, the grant deadline is due in next Friday, so we are on track to have it done. We have contracted the grant writer, Grant Masters, to write this grant, and they're in the process of completing that right now. So we don't really have the final cost numbers on that yet, but we'll have it back by the first week so we can review it and then, you know, submit it on time for the process. So that's going on there. Um, another thing that's come up, we have developed a transmission PTO takeoff link on the ladder on 2050. Um, so we'll go out to, um, probably Olson Trucking, and Bill over Olson Trucking, um, is an emergency vehicle technician as well. Have him take a look at that and give us an estimate as to what it's gonna take to fix that, so he can put that back into service right now or is out of service. Um, his rough estimate at the beginning, looking around, talking about, is about 500 bucks. But you see what happens once you really get eyes on it and you figure out what's going on there. So that's coming up unforeseen, so we'll have that coming down the road. Um, other than that, it's been pretty much business as usual. We've done sanding and parade lights and, um, we did tunnel the tower and all, dedication today. It was an amazing, amazing opportunity again. Um, but yeah, it's kind of gotten busy. Questions?
$500, you said, a PTO on the ladder?
Well, it was a guess, but I...
It's a guess, but I get, but I just want to make sure that's...
Yeah. But, you know, let's, let's cut the zeros on most friends.
You okay?
I have to say that as a civilian, I'm rather shocked at the cost of each handheld radio. Are these ones that have to go through repeaters and stuff like that?
Oh, they are, yes, you can go to repeater, yeah. I mean, that's...
I'm just wondering exactly why they cost so much?
Well, they have to be, and transit radios, they gotta do something to go into a burning building, a fire building, and all those other types of things. Um, it's all part of it. But yeah, it's, and then about three main factors. There's Motorola, there is, um, Harris. See, I think the police department's running Harris radios. I just got one a couple years ago when Matt was here. I think they're running Harris radios. And then there's, uh, BK radios as well. They're all the top roles here, uh, for FPA compliant radios. So we're shopping there.
Any questions, one more question together?
Um, thank you. By the fire department, for what you guys did on the parade of lights. I, uh, I thought it was awesome.
It was, it had an amazing turnout. It was an incredible turnout down there. It was great, so...
Okay, thank you. Move on to the police department. Uh, Chief John couldn't be here. He's away on a short vacation, burning up his comp time. He told him he had to use up. But he did, yeah, but he did ask me to, uh, read this, so I read it, put it into public record for the people that might be watching. Uh, we had, for the November, we had three arrests. We issued nine citations, 13 warnings, zero warrants served, zero robberies, zero homicides, zero unattended deaths, one assault, zero sex crimes, two thefts, zero burglaries, one criminal mischief, three frauds, one suspicious activity, two traffic accidents, one privacy and communication, two intimidations, 62 calls for service, zero lost property, zero vehicle tolls, one welfare check, 22 traffic stops, zero disturbances, and zero victims notified. And he wanted me to also add that he, you know, all these years down there and, um, where he was at on the Tallahassee, he had more enjoyment doing the toys for dogs with the kids when they all went into Walmart. He never doubt do that kind of stuff down there. And he said it was just unbelievable. He had so much fun doing it. Can't wait for next year. So he wanted me to pass that on to everybody. So with that, we'll move on to the public works. Does Janelle back it? Does Steve Johnson anything to say?
We did hire a new person this month, Kevin McGinnley. He's doing good. Uh, he jumps right in, he's inquisitive, hard-working, he's real mechanical. Um, working to get him up to speed to hopefully one day have the certification like Glenn did. We've already started, uh, sessions, uh, on the book, the training book. We had a small training up here with Montana Royal War. Last week, they came up and spent about three hours. They had a pretty good class, but, uh, our department up there. So got my fingers crossed for him. He's, um, so far, so good. Really like him, really gets along with everybody, and he's really come over by jumping in. He drives from Missouri, so that's, and he's, he beats me here after time, so he's, he's in. Working out good.
Give him time.
Give him time.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep. I have a question more.
Go, go ahead.
Where do we stand on the meter installs?
We're in the 30s now.
Hey.
34, 37.
Yeah, from 180 something down to 30 something.
All right, great.
We did 8 or 10 this week, so it's gonna be even less than that.
Good job.
Getting there.
Okay. Move on to item number seven, public hearings. A, second reading, propose additions to ordinance 135 in ordinance of the town Stevensville Traffic Code Section 1006100. This has to do with that, uh, last meeting when we did the, uh, first reading about, uh, 50 miles east sides over there on East Second and Third Street. So with that, could I hear, oh, it is a public hearing. Anybody want to talk about it from the public? Nope? All right, then we'll move right down to new business, which is the same thing. New business, discussion decision, additions to ordinance number 135 in ordinance of the town Stevensville Traffic Code Section 10061003. Could I entertain a motion, please? Councilmember Barker?
I make a motion to approve additions to ordinance number 135 in ordinance of the town Stevensville Traffic Code Section 1-06-100, Section 3.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barker. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown?
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Councilmember Brown. Do we have a discussion from the council on ordinance 135? If you look on down to highlight in the area, it's pretty much specific. A, East Third Street, K D Second Street, Rio River Avenue, and then down there, which, uh... Uh, Janelle? She, no, I mean, she put in, future amendments to sections to this may be set by resolution. So that way we don't have to come back and keep bringing the whole thing. We can just put a resolution in, fix that, and move on. So that's a good thing that she did. No questions from the council? Any questions from the public on the resolution? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
And Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Item number B, discussion decision, resolution number 559, a resolution of the town council of Thomas Stevensville, Montana, providing for the revision of the budget of the fiscal year 2425. So Robert put this in here, uh, this came up in the budget where we're basically, uh, tidying up the workshop as far as we do things, and we wanted to make a separate, our own line items where they, uh, water and sewer. So that way for the capital improvements, that way it's not a bunch of stuff. They're there, and we know that that's what we have for future, uh, development. Correct?
Yeah, but it's very transparent, the markings are.
We're just tidying it up. Could I get a motion, please? Councilmember?
I move that we approve resolution number 5, 59, resolution of the town councils, town of Stevensville, providing for the revisions of budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Smith. Do we have a second? Councilmember Barker?
Second motion.
We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Barker. Do we have a discussion from the council? We have a discussion from the public on budget amendment.
Is it amended or redone?
No, it's just a resolution. We're just, not amend, we're just putting in the line items, right?
Yeah, it's just, we actually passed it in the budget and, but we're, we're just providing a little bit more transparency because before, everything was going into just the main fund, and, and we never really knew there were certain restricted muddies that we're having have to do with sewer. And then we had to have money in there for future projects. And so to move that money and be more transparent on the budget line, it lets you know how much money, one, that we have that restricted every year for our costs that we have to pay, and how much money we have out there for future projects, for the match. Because before, it was really hard to tell. It just all went into just this one fund. So when we redid the water rates this year, um, we created those lines, um, to provide more transparency on the budget so that we knew, okay, we have $300,000. Here's a water repair grant that we can go after. How much money do we have for the match? It was really hard to tell that before. So this just provides, uh, just a little bit more knowledge for us to be able to look at those at a bird's eye view, actually give to the council and help people, your idea of what we're doing.
No more comments from the public or the council? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Item number C, discussion decision, resolution number 560, a resolution establishing a temporary contract for public work services to the town Stevensville. So as you know... So as you know, we, uh, we have to have a certified wastewater operator that can come down there and sign off on everything. Even though Cody knows it, he knows it, been down here long enough, they can go through all this stuff, but Glenn has to be the guy, so. Glenn's agreed to come in, I'll take eight hours a week, and walk through it, get it all certified, until we get a certified wastewater operator. That's what the contract is about. So with that, could I entertain a motion, please? Councilmembers?
I move that we improve resolution number five sixty, resolution establishing a temporary contract for public work services for our town of Stevensville.
We have a motion by councilmember Smith, we have a second. Councilmember Nelson?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Nelson, do we have a discussion from the council on the contract for wastewater? Councilmember Brown?
Uh, was there, and did anybody reach out to any of the other towns that have a certified, that's local, say, Derby, Hamilton, that could come down to and help us out? Or is this our only shot from the dark?
Well, we would have to pay again probably a lot more, in my opinion, and everything else. Glenn knows the system here, worked it for, how long?
Yeah, four, fourteen years.
Yeah.
We only need one, and we need his name on the paper. So every week, we have to, we have to send in the samples from down there with a form that he has to develop, if he has to sign for. Because he's certified. I can take a sample all day long, but they don't want my name.
Councilmember.
Uh, how far out are we possibly getting somebody certified?
Right, that's my question.
Okay, March.
March is our next, March, 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 yes.
And we're working on getting Kevin Waters, wastewater certified as well. So that is the most difficult test to take. Um, I've talked to Montana Water, we've talked about it, and we set up, um, these trains for them to come here, which is really, really nice. And, um, so even if some of these crews are taking that, but Kevin, the new guy, his, you know, his first priority is to become wastewater certified. But it is a very, very difficult task to take.
And March will be too simple. We gotta be careful. We'll see, there's another one in there, another.
The guy that came up and started to class last week with these guys, I was talking to him, he found the history of stuff of wastewater, so it's hard, and like Cody said, it's the math.
Yeah.
The math, the equations, the formula, what to do for all that, that's the hardest part of it.
It's what I was hoping.
Taking, not allowed to use calculator or something.
I don't know. In a lot of terms, you, uh, you wouldn't be familiar with the question. And, you know, these things I've never heard of.
I think we should be lucky that Glenn's agreed to come back, because he had to get permission from his wife. And he's on a deal with his retirement, he can't even collect the paycheck from us for like three months or something, so he has to hold back on that. But he's not here until eight hours, he'd be, like he said, I can come in and I might get it some days, depending, three or four hours, and I'm gone.
Yeah. And I called him today, but of course, but I'm alone, hell, scared, it's crazy. He always there. I can do that with some money, you know, or whatever, going back to your question. We're familiar with him, he's known, he's just a best, he's the best man.
Any other comments from the council on the contract for Glenn, for wastewater? Any comments from the public on the contract for Glenn? Seeing none, do not would you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Barker?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, thank you. Item number D, discussion decision, Department of Commerce Community Technical Assistance Program funding for the town of Stevensville growth policy. This kind of made my ear, um, out of the blue. Maybe called, uh, Janelle one day, and said that she was doing some perusing, and she said that Stevensville hasn't been up on a growth policy since two thousand and sixteen, and she was willing to reach out with how much thirty thousand?
Of, of worth a thirty thousand dollar project?
Yes, to come and help us do our growth policy next year. So. And it would just, we don't have to put an RQ out to try to find somebody like we did before when Mayor Gibson was here, we couldn't get any takers to help us with this, they're willing to come down, or do Zoom, whatever it takes to get us going on this next year, to get us through the process to get a policy for it. So I think it's the right one for us. They're gonna be busy, Councilmember Barker, next year.
Perfect, I'm ready.
Okay.
Sat idle too long.
That's right. So with that, can I entertain a motion, please?
Well, that's gotta come from you.
Oh.
No, she's.
I can't even get there, so.
Councilmember Nelson?
Um, I make a motion that we accept the Department of Commerce Community Technical Institute Program funding for the town of Stevensville growth policy update.
I have a motion by councilmember Nelson, do I have a second, please? Councilmember.
A second, now.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Brown, do we have a, any further discussion from the council on the Commerce Department's growth policy? Councilmember Nelson?
So the thirty thousand that was mentioned, that, that is what a grant of sorts?
No, they have it available. I, I think what they're gonna do, correct me if I'm wrong now, she'll basically, when she helps us, does that, they'll be taking that out of there. You know, paying themselves, basically, whatever. We won't know about it, but she's gonna be here hands on, helping us work this through the process.
And there'll be some other outside entities that then support her and, um, the Community Technical Assistance Program, and so it's us, and I think three other towns that were identified as needing help to get theirs up to date, that's how we'll start it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public on the growth policy? Commerce Department. No further discussion from the council, Janelle, would you please take the vote?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Councilmember Barker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, thank you. Item number E, discussion decision, master agreement for professional airport engineering services between the town of Stevensville and Morrison-Marley Incorporated. So, when Will was here, he was getting that ready to go, and of course, he resigned, and then it sat, and Brian came aboard, and Brian looked into it, and we were on a real strict deadline to get this, this hearing, so we can get the grant going, to get financed. So, Brian brought it before the airport board, we had to have a special meeting at the airport board. He brought it before them, told them, and then we didn't have, and then we brought it for you, we didn't have the time to open it before you because of the deadline. But Morrison-Marley was the only, they were the only bid. That could I give a motion? Councilmembers?
I move that we approve master agreement for the professional airport engineering services between the town of Stevensville and Morrison-Marley Incorporated.
We have a motion by councilmember Smith, do we have a second? Councilmember Barker?
A second motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second by councilmember Barker, and with your permission, Brian, would you like to come up and speak on that, or you can hear further to say about it?
Yeah, Morrison-Marley's been our, uh, design engineer for, gosh, Craig, do you know how many years now, I think going back to?
Since sixteen, at least.
Yeah, at least, at least since then, uh, they've also are performing the, uh, or are creating the new master, uh, master plan for the airport as well. Um, they've been, you know, without them, we would be so lost trying to navigate through this, this grant process with the FAA and the Department of Aeronautics. And they're a tremendous partner for us. So, I, I was ecstatic that they want to continue that partnership, glad that they, uh, they submitted, they were the sole submission, so it made it really easy for us, uh, but I think it would have been, I think they would have scored above anybody else anyway, so. Uh, I ask that, uh, you guys approve this, because I think it would be great for the airport and for the future.
Go ahead, Craig, step up.
Craig Thomas, morning, ladies and gentlemen, the way, the bookboard chair. Uh, none of this would have happened without Janelle and Bob here. Getting in front of you, we were extremely short on time, we were very blessed that Brian stepped up. If we'd not waited two weeks, we would have lost funding and the opportunity to do this, so it was very important. From the board, we'd like to say thank you very much about that, particularly Brian and the efforts. Morrison-Marley, Kevin, and Tyler, and Brian, and Diane, our representative from the FAA, have really stepped up in this, I mean, it was a short timeline, they've worked very hard at it. The second item I would like to say is our last airport board meeting, Gina and Robert have divided us with the best budget that we have seen in the last several years, and I'd say thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions for the council?
Just like to say at the last board meeting, and once before that, the two gentlemen that presented, I was totally impressed with, and, and just the way they, and what they have presented for us. And, uh, they spoke civilian, so that I could understand it.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
I did have a couple of questions on this, um, contract agreement. I'm not sure if anybody can answer those questions, since I don't see any representatives for Morrison-Marley out there. Tyler was unable to attend this evening. So, I guess they will, they'll one answer, then.
Sidney Brad, I can answer them.
Okay.
Let's give it a shot and see, maybe not, probably not, but I'll come at it.
Okay, um, on page, I, I don't even know if you have a copy of the master, the agreement. But on page one oh four, um, item number seven, um, I would just like an explanation about that, and it's about task orders and, um, issued here under, during this term, or the validity of any actions taken under, uh, with respect to such task orders, including modification, um, whether taken before or after the expiration of this, uh, term of this agreement. Does that, is that stating if, if you have a project in, and there, you're under a task order, and this agreement, which expires in five years, they're still going to honor that task order?
Yeah, that's, that's what it is, so the, these task orders, they get, uh, you know, they're put in six, eight, ten months in advance of the project, uh, taking place, of the project going under construction. So, my understanding, and I, I don't have that in front of me, I was trying to pull it up real quick, but you, you beat me to it, but, uh, is exactly what you just inferred, is that the task order, when the task orders put in, uh, they are including in that cost, or the, the cost that are shown in that task order, their design service fees. And so their design service fees will be captured in the project when the project is funded. Um, and so they would go and continue that work under those task orders, even in the event that, that their contract were to expire before that work, that project was completed. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I continue? Um, and then, um, I had a question on, uh, under page number four on eleven of twenty-six. They, oh, prepare the required FAA grant application, I know Tyler does a lot of them. I was wondering, is there other grants that is available to the airports that you also are going to be looking at? And will they help with those?
Yeah, outside of the FAA and the Department of Aeronautics, uh, I guess the answer would be no, no. Um, those are the two different funding entities that we are working with. Are you aware of anything that we've ever called by work prior to?
Well, no, there, there has been several cases during projects that Morrison-Marley have stepped up and got additional funding, which was not getting part of the original grant or contract. So, historically, they have benefited the airport significantly in that way. Furthermore, like they would be going over to the Montana Aeronautic meetings, and they do that on their own time, it's like when they come to the airport board meeting, they're not charged each for that. So, they're basically volunteering their efforts and expertise outside of their paid contract.
And then my next question was on, on two point oh two. Uh, they mention in their, um, a fee, an engineering fee. Um, and then they also mention it, um, different spots, also five point oh six and five point oh seven, and with the interest, do we happen to know what exactly the engineering fee are approximate cost for those fees?
So those fees vary greatly depending upon the size of the project. Um, and I do, uh, I can give you some examples of what the engineering fees are for some of the projects that are coming here. Yeah. Um, but they vary, it's not like there's a fixed fee for every project. Design fees, you know, as small as seven thousand dollars, and as high as thirty-five thousand dollars, depending upon the type of project. Design fees. Yeah, we have a runway, uh, pavement maintenance, that's fourteen thousand, seven hundred, taxiway, taxi lane, maintenance, thirteen thousand, three hundred, apron maintenance, seven thousand. Um, fuel service, the, the new fuel farm, that's probably the biggest one. That's, uh, yeah, that is the biggest one, I, I missed this one when I first gave it to you, that's sixty thousand in design fees on that.
Then under, um, three point oh eight, it says designate and writing a person to act as the owner's representative with respect to the engineering services. Uh, that was about the only place I saw that owner's representative, I was just wondering what exactly they meant by that?
Owner's representative, I mean, that's a, that's a term that we use in construction a lot for, uh, the person that is able to make decisions for the project. Represent, in this case, the airport, the town of Stevensville, and make decisions for the project.
Okay, I was just, I wanted to make sure that it was town of Stevensville that was going to be making those decisions. And then I had questions on the reuse of construction documents and reuse of the planning documents. Um, I think it's said in there that they hit, we don't have the right to reuse them. So if it expires, then we have to pay, if for some reason isn't completed, those documents are not to our disposal to reuse, is that correct?
Do you, do you know where you found that?
Six point oh seven and six point oh eight.
Page one fourteen, or one fifteen.
Yeah, one fifteen. In the packet, there were pages nineteen and twenty-six.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to think of an example of where we would need to do that or we would want to do that. I don't think it's so much that if the job doesn't go through, I mean, any time a project, if it's designed but it doesn't occur, when it has, you know, if it's been two years or five years, we go and look to go and, you know, revive that project, we'd have to go back through the documents and see if any codes have changed anyways, make sure that all the standards that the project was designed to are still accurate. So there would, I guess, there would always have to be another review. Some lapse in time between when they were originally engineered and when the project broke around, but and reused by the owner without specific written verification or adaptation by the engineer shall get the owner's. Yeah, so I guess they're saying if we went and got the fuel tank drawings for the new fuel tank, and then in five years we decided to put another fuel tank somewhere else and we tried to use, reuse the same drawings, you know, that, that's probably not going to be a good idea, you know? You would have to go back through designing to go and design a new tank in a new location. You wouldn't be able to reuse the same documents. I think that's what we're saying here, right? Any reuse by owner without specific written verification or adaptation by engineer shall get the owner's sole risk and without liability or legal exposure to the engineer.
Okay, that was my, all of my questions.
Yeah. I don't, I guess I don't take any exception to that one. We won't reuse the drawings anyway.
Any other comments on the council? On the master agreement? Any comments from the public on the master agreement? See, Nunzio, now would you take the vote?
Councilmember Brown? Uh, no. Would you please repeat that? No, thank you.
Just a second.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Parker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Smith?
All right. Motion passed three to one. Thank you. Moving to item number F, approval of track allowance service agreement between the Town of Stevensville and Montana Railway regarding the railroad crossing at East Second Street. So when I first became mayor, one of the first emails and one of the first phone calls, everything I got was from Arnold Bus Service, from people that live on the other side of the tracks over there complaining about that crossing. So I contacted Montana Railway and contacted it and contacted it and contacted it all year. And finally, at the end of the year, out of nowhere, he sends me an email and wants to meet up there. Well, I was on my walk and he stopped in the office here and talked to you now. So then, when I got home, I called him and we had a conversation. And in that conversation, he said that Revalli County has already started removing their crossings and having them paved. It's already going on now. So he was, I said, well, that's great. What would it take for them to go out and do ours? Because Revalli County, the county owns that side of the tracks and we own this side of the tracks. So as you see the email, he, I said, could you follow up an email and I'll ring it before the council? So I could see the email. He laid out three options. And the first one is an agreement between a railroad and a road authority owner, which is us, to remove the tracks and pave the roadway. In this case of agreement, it would be with the Town of Stevensville and MRL. Well, he said MRL, but actually the MRL is no longer. It's called now the Washington Corporation. And they don't even, they own these little service lines here, but they don't have a maintenance away, they don't have nothing to do with it. They even have to contract out to have somebody come take, like the rail out of the ties. So the agreement spells out what to perform, pay for the work, remove the tracks, and pave the roadway. The agreement also stipulates the rights retained by the railroad to reinstall new crossings should a railroad ever resume operating, like he said, it won't happen in our lifetime on a branch line. For your comments, it sounds like the Revalli County Road Department may need to be involved with it well since this location straddles a dominance in the county boundary. The cost in this case would be covered by the Town of Stevensville at Revalli County. When we've been removing crossing this year and paving back, the price per crossing is around $13,000 each. In this case, I'd expect it to be $24,000 to $30,000 total. So you split that in two, that would be like 15, 13 to 15 grand for us. To verify current pricing, though, we need an estimate from the contract. So of course, you got item number two, if we didn't want to take this, we could go with the repair of crossing timbers. MRL's contractor would come down, repair the new plates, the deteriorating crossing timbers. The issue here is that the track ties are usually in poor shape, so when we try to bolt down the new timbers, the bolts don't bite and the ties won't hold. We generally try to avoid this option because we never have great luck with it unless we install new ties before we bolt the timbers in. This would be, of course, their cost. And you could tell me not in the email, that they probably wouldn't do that, probably, unless it got so bad, which it already is bad. Number three, remove the timbers and pave over. The timbers could be removed and fill the space with asphalt with the track structures and ties remaining in place. Issue with this is that the track ties remain in place and continue to deteriorate over time and settle, and then the paving goes right back down. So item number one, he and I thought, and they're already doing it in Revalli County, would be the best option. So I found out tonight through Robert, and he's going to look into it, but it appears that where this crossing is there is in our Tiff district.
Is it because of the Senex plant and that being right there? Is that?
Well, it's in that little area.
Oh, yeah, I know where it's at.
Yeah, yeah. So we got $300,000 dollars that we could use. We could go total there. But I'm saying, he's going to check your note, but it sounds like we could use that. And if we did, we could use, of course, our Parsa money because of paving and that street. And I wouldn't, I just want to give, to give your blessing so we could start the process. He would start the process. He would draw up the service agreement between us, MRL, Revalli County. And when that's done, he would bring that back and we would bring it before the council was finally approved. That way we have the numbers if it's coming from the Tiff or it was coming out of Parsa, how much it is. So that's why I really think we should do it. That thing, as you well know, has been, well, you know, Stacy, you live over there. As long as I've been here, it's been, it's that.
Well, and I think they came through it one time and tried to fix it, but it's, I mean, even a big truck, you hear those trucks go across that, around, yeah, the sides of the rail. And it's getting downward, it's getting deeper, and it could cause some damage.
And I'm, being a railroad owner, I know that that's the best option, A. Because if you do a band-aid, and if we've been doing for the last probably 25 years, they've been band-aided for about six months to here, and then take contacts, you know, and if they're, if they put some gravel, do something to it.
Are we paying, something that hits my memory, that we're paying like 125 a month for the crossing? Or is it a year or something like that?
It's a hundred a year.
A year.
A year.
It's a hundred a year.
A year?
A year.
For these, when we put a water and smooth through their tracks. I'm looking into that too, because since it's no longer MRL and Gina, Revalli, why are we paying them?
Yeah, okay. So they should eliminate that at least.
Well, we'll look into it. Well, like I told her, we don't know if we want to, you know, too loudly, because now that there's a MRL anymore, Washington Corporation might say.
Well, you know.
We don't need. Anyway, with that, could I interrogate a motion, please? And with that motion, could I please stipulate which, which one you want? Item one to three, so we know. I would propose item number one, we should just look into the service agreement and then come back with the agreement. And if we don't like it, we can always hope, know at that time. I would like to see us get to that part.
I make a motion that we approve, that we make approval of the hour of track service agreement between the Town of Stevensville and Montana Railway regarding railroad crossing at East Second Street.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson, we have a second. Councilmember Parker?
Well, second option?
We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Parker. Do we have further discussion from the council?
Do we have to amend that to which?
Oh, yeah, I want to put item number one. Yes. So, no. Any comments from the council?
Question. So estimation around 20, 25 grand?
Well, that's the goal, is that, that's, we would split that, give Revalli County down on that side of the track.
So that's worth 13,000.
Yeah, 13 to 15 would be our cost. And like you said, they contracted out, they have to hire some candies or whatever coming to pull the spikes, cut the rail, take it out, and then pave the company. So they don't even do that themselves.
You know how to do that.
Yeah, I do, but I'm retired. No comments from the council? Any comments from the public on the crossing being taken out and paved over on East Second Street?
See, Nunzio, now would you take the vote?
Councilmember Parker?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion passed as far as zero, thank you. The people that drive the bus, thank you. Item number G, discussion decision. Set a Cal meeting to discuss council rules and procedures. Councilmember Brown, been going back and forth on this for a couple of months now. She would like to see us get together and do a workshop. I agree. Sometime in January, we should sit down and do a workshop and we can go work through council rules or some changes. I'm sure we would all like to see. And we could also work through the procedures, as we discussed with Molly yesterday, on how to do an agenda item, tidy that all up. We did a lot of Cal meetings this last year, so.
Don't load them up with six items.
I think it's a minute for councilmembers and all of them. That can interrogate a motion?
Yes.
Set a meeting. She probably set a meeting today, set a meeting date and put it in the motion.
Okay. I move we set a Cal meeting, set a date and to discuss council rules and procedures.
I need a date.
Let's look at, look at the calendar.
Town hall is closed, of course, on the first, and we have a town council meeting on January 9th. So keep that in mind.
There's a seventh that's open, please say.
The following would be in between council meetings, which might be a little.
You want it to be the 16th?
If you had anything that you wanted to propose, you could give it to me by, you know, that evening or by noon on the 16th, you know? So that's an idea, yeah?
The 16th, I thought it passed for me first.
16th?
Yeah.
January 16th?
They'll amend it to the 16th?
Okay. We have a motion.
We need a time.
We need a time.
Ladies?
I don't usually get home until about 5:30 from work, so I would just stay with our regular council time of 6:30.
We're meeting 6:30?
6:30.
6:30 on the 16th? Okay, we have a second. Got a motion by you, and a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second to set a Cal meeting for January 16th at 6:30 PM. Any further discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council on the council rules, procedures, Cal meeting, January? See, Nunzio, now would you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Parker?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion passed as far as zero, thank you. Board of directors?
Airport Board, Brian certainly just pretty well summed up everything. There was some discussion, pretty in-depth there for a while, it lasted a while, but talking about the property taxes that are paid at the airport, and 50% of them goes to the Town of Stevensville, and we didn't know what it was or what for or what becomes of it. But Brian said that he would inquire of the mayor and the finance officer, and he'll come up with an answer on that. And also from what Craig had said earlier, I'll probably expound them just a little bit with some crazy budget from Gina and Robert. And one thing he did say, he's never seen one that comes out to the penny in all the years that he's been associated with the airport. He was quite pleased with that. And that's my report.
Thank you, Molly. Any other board reports? Council comments? Councilmember Brown?
Since this is our meeting, last meeting for the month, I would just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And I would like to personally extend a big thank you for all the people who made the big ceremony for the towers to tunnel ribbon cutting. Such a big success today. It was amazing. The house is beautiful. It is so geared towards Officer Palmer. It's totally amazing. So I would, I deeply want to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you, it was pretty neat, pretty neat. Any other council comments? Okay, we'll move on to the executive report. Okay, on 11/22/24, I did the Turkey Trot in around Stevensville local businesses. I raised, was able to raise $500 and a ham from bottom insurance to donate to the pantry partners. I want to personally thank all businesses who gave so generously to this. And the pantry partners would also like to thank all the businesses that participated. And next year, if I do it again, which I probably will, and I hope to don't, that's my goal, so. I have to go twice to the businesses.
Morning, good afternoon.
I would also like to thanks to Sean Doyle, the Civic Club and Public Works for the great job they did on the Country Christmas Parade of Lights. I'd also like to thank the fire department for their work in hanging the lights and being there and support and having their trucks in the parade. It was fantastic, like Jeff said earlier. You was Pat, Steven was there. We mentioned it when we were standing by the light pole there. Just gets busier every year. That's great for the Town of Stevensville. How about I thanks Janelle, Gina, Andrina, Jessica, and past employee Glenn Bees and colleague Taylor for keeping our office on the same side of things this past year. I want to thank who are police, our fire department, and Public Works for doing a great job above and beyond restoring debris and leaf, along with our daily chores. You guys deserve a big kudos. It's been a wild year. We got through it. There was days I didn't think we could because there were so many things going on, but I want to thank you, Steve, and all the guys. We had wastewater training, as Steve mentioned earlier, on December 4th, and we will start water certification training with August Schuler on the 17th here for Public Works employees. Janelle and Gina are looking forward to going to municipal training next year at Fairmont Hot Springs. And even though we don't have the money, we will find the money for them. So I want to thank you too, because they seem very excited. So, put you on the spot, you gotta go now. There will be a hearing in front of the Honorable Judge Wink on December 18th, which is next Wednesday at 9:00 AM in Revalli County Courthouse regarding Bird Farms. I will be in attendance, along with Greg. I will be on vacation from December 23rd to the 28th. Council President Brown will be the acting mayor in my absence. Thank you, Cindy. I would like to give a short review of what you, the council, have did this last year. First and foremost, you appointed a council member, Mr. Nelson, here to replace me on the councils in December of last year. You, the council, revised and approved the following, the personnel policy, the purchasing policy, the drug and alcohol policy, first time since 2016. You brought all of the job dis.
You brought all of the job descriptions up to date for the first time since 2018. You hired a new police chief, two new officers. You approved two Public Works people and one fire and court corps. You appointed numerous fire department cadets and EMTs. You appointed a deputy clerk to under your case, and I want to personally thank you for being so patient, because she is a rock star. She is the one basically pulling the strings to get us down to those 37. She makes phone calls, she sets appointments. If people come in and they don't do it right, she says, it's going right back out. So you approved and agreed, and agreed with the Montana Department of Wildlife and Parks at this John Owens fishing access site for those signs. You established a non-call policy with Public Works, which we've never had before. You established a tubular levy for disaster funds. You worked through and helped go through four major offenses here, one snow, two wind, and one fire. You approved a surplus sale of numerous items of town property. You approved a new airport master plan. You approved a new SRO contract with the school district. You raised water and sewer rates for the first time in nine years, although unpopular with some of you and many of the town folk, it was a responsible thing to do. You appointed a new airport manager. You renewed our contract with our attorney. You approved a 24, 25 budget after numerous budget workshops. You continue to support the town's efforts to get our water rights in order for future responsible development. You approved the Mission Street Water Main Replacement Project. You approved the paving on Spring Street and Railroad Avenue. You approved a new fee schedule to help streamline the process of changing fees as resolutions. You approved an ordinance for amending town code, section 1435, and repealing town code, section 4036, regarding obvious speeds. You approved a resolution adopting a fee schedule on charges for airport fees by the town of Stevensville. You approved a resolution adopting a fee schedule on charge for building electrical and the janitoring, building permits, and plumbing fees. You approved a resolution adopting a use of fee for bulk water by the town of Stevensville. And you approved the stop Neoside on the corner of East and Third and Railroad Avenue. So I went and looked back, and I went and put a look back, and all here is that I was on the council since 2016. And I will say that this council, you have did more this year than any other council since I was there. Yeah, I'm emotional, you should be proud of it. Guys did a lot. Did a lot. Put a lot of work into it, and I'm proud of you. As a council, I'm proud of this staff, I'm proud of everybody out there, and I want to say thank you very much. And with that, I would help these talk, and I want to interrogate a motion.
Before I make that motion, I would just like to say thank you, Bob, because you brought this stuff up for us, and without that, and the work of their staff, we couldn't do it.
I don't get credit for that. I'll let you receive the table.
You were there, you were going, you were. Now I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Thank you.